I'd like to call the Mentor City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017, to order. The invocation will be given this evening by Councilman Marn, after which he will call for a moment of silence for the victims and survivors of the Las Vegas tragedy.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent. And now, a moment of silence for the horrific tragedy that happened in Las Vegas. God bless to everyone involved, men, women, armed services, and to future health, and even, God bless, the people that are giving blood to help those in need.
Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, please call the roll. Mr. Marn?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landik?
Here.
We have the approval of the minutes of the work session of September 9th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
And the regular meeting of September 19th, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Yes, we have a special presentation this evening. We have Representative Ron Young with us, and this is a very timely presentation. Mr. Filipek?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. And sadly, the events of this week in Las Vegas have reminded us of the importance of being prepared with our emergency response capabilities. As council is aware, we have been working for several years on a plan to create and construct, at some point, when funds were made available, an emergency response facility that would be located here in Mentor that would serve as a regional response center that would house a number of our specialty units and provide link access to key transportation infrastructure in the community, particularly the Lost Nation Airport. When asked Chief Searls to talk a little bit about the importance of this facility and how it will serve the region, but it's important to point out that it's been, this project, while in the planning stages for many years, is, will now be able to go forward through assistance with the state of Ohio that's been made possible through the efforts of our state elected representatives, particularly Representative Young, who's joining us here today, and Senator Ackland, who cannot be with us here today. But we, of course, have a great appreciation for those efforts that'll help make this possible. Chief Searls, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filipek, members of council. Our region is well-respected for our response capabilities and our ability to manage big deal or large-scale events, not just in the community, but in the region. Over the years, the city has committed to a number of specialty vehicles. We've partnered with our neighbors, and we have a number of vehicles that are spread throughout the city. This regional response facility will allow us to bring those vehicles together in one location for immediate response, but more importantly, it'll allow us to build the relationships that we have with our neighbors and have a more regional response on a strategic level that I think is going to benefit the community. We're very appreciative of the award that we have, and the other thing that I'd like to give credit to is the working relationship that we have with all public safety disciplines throughout Lake County and within this region. I'm very proud of the service that we have, and this facility will do more than just house vehicles. It's going to make us a stronger public safety response system. So, thank you very much.
Madam President, just would mention one other thing. This is also made possible by council's leadership in creating a much closer relationship and partnership with the Lake County Port Authority, which, of course, this building will actually be constructed upon through our lease arrangement with them, of course, which would not be possible without that linkage. So, again, some of the efforts that we've been working on over the years are starting to pay off and come together.
Marn, would you like to come forward and make the presentation to the chiefs?
Yeah. I'd just like to say that this was such a community effort, and I was just proud to be part of the team. This project was first presented to me by most of you, in fact. I think I was pretty much ganged up on by you guys, but you did a great job, very professional, and the need is obvious, particularly today. I really appreciated your prayers, God. It is so critical that we have these types of responses available for our public servants, people that are willing to risk their lives for all of us, to give them the tools they need to respond expeditiously, particularly after what we just saw in Las Vegas and those horrific events. And I think this is, this proper kind of reasonable preparedness is such a large part of the equation for this country and for Mentor and all of Lake County, in fact. So, again, I'm just proud to be part of the team. Thank you. I just want to say one more thing, very quickly. Without the assistance of City Manager Ken Filipek and his persistence, he drove down to Columbus, and he would not let leadership go in the Ohio House until they agreed that this was a good project.
Yes.
So, love your persistence. It's not always comfortable, but it's (laughter).
Okay, we have a public hearing this evening, ordinance number 17-0-95. This public hearing is being held pursuant to notice duly published and posted according to law. Julie, please read the legislation.
An ordinance amending Part 11, Title V, Chapter 1162 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended, and same relating to landscaping.
Mr. Filipek.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'm going to ask Administrative Services Manager Andy Rose to present this on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Filipek. Good evening, Madam President, members of council. The administration is recommending the amending of the landscaping code to include a provision that requires 50 percent ground cover on all developed residential lots. Our current ordinance requires lots to have grass planted in the front setback, but it does not call out the specifics of how much is required. The new provision, which is a supplement to the landing code, requires 50 percent coverage in residentially zoned property excluding driveway, sidewalks, porches. In addition to the ground cover requirements, this ordinance also places a limitation on berms and mounds. The new requirement limits the height of berms and mounds to two feet above the finished grade and caps the berms and mound area to 20 percent of the total lawn area. Thank you.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none. Council is in receipt of all correspondence received pertaining to this matter. The public hearing is adjourned. New legislation, ordinance number 17-0-95.
An ordinance amending Part 11, Title V, Chapter 1162 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended, the same relating to landscaping.
Mr. Filipek.
Thank you, Madam President. I think Mr. Rose did a good job of indicating what the changes are. I want to thank the Law Department for working closely with the administration on this, and I think it's important to point out that this legislation really comes before you as a result of a number of nuisance complaints we've had over the years, which we've been unable to resolve because of a lack of clarity in our standards, and I think everyone would agree that in our community, it's important to have grass on our front and on our lawns. And so, that's something that we want. I think it provides flexibility to provide suitable landscape areas, but overall, I think it's an effort to just uphold the standards that 99.9 percent of our residents already maintain.
I have a question. Are any, what would be non-conforming properties now, are they grandfathered, or would they be required to comply with the new ordinance?
I don't have an answer to that right now. I mean, generally, generally, whenever you pass a change to the zoning code, you are talking about grandfathering and creating non-conforming uses. I mean, obviously, you can't say, "Well, we're going to go to 40-foot setbacks, everybody, you know, move your house." But, you know, there are exceptions, and I didn't anticipate your question, and I probably should have. There are exceptions to that sometimes, as they can relate to things that aren't, you know, they're more health, safety, and welfare types of things, the police powers, and so I can't answer that specifically on this. I mean, arguably, you know, the way it is now is, you know, it's hard to change it, but there could be application, and so that's something I, you know, I can get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen?
Madam President? Yeah, I was going to ask the same thing about the mounds that are over two feet high, if they were grandfathered, and so Richard basically answered that. Thanks.
Well, you know, I think, you know, it's a matter of the degree, okay? Whereas mounds, you know, that's probably a little bit different than, you know, having live grass or ivy or what have you. So, it's just something I could take a look at and get a memo out to council on.
Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-95 has been approved. Ordinance number 17-0-96. An ordinance to authorize transfers of funds and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency. Mr. Filipek.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filipek. Members of council, this ordinance does two things. Firstly, it authorizes two permanent cash transfers out of the city's general fund, the first being for a little over $226,000 relative to closing out the bioretention brick-paver project at the Marina, and secondly, one and a quarter million dollars is transferred in to fund our self-insurance healthcare fund. That represents about one full quarter. We run about $5 million annually on the claims. And then, the second section of the ordinance has several appropriation revisions, primarily for a very small grant donation that was made, and also to close out or move money for federal grants, and I recommend approval. Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-96 has been approved. Ordinance number 17-0-97. An ordinance to revise the Codified Ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended by adopting current replacement pages and declaring an emergency. Mr. Filipek.
I'll take this. Thank you. You see this three or four times a year, where we sweep all of the legislation that you have previously passed of a permanent nature and incorporate it into the Mentor Code of Ordinances, the Green Book, as I tend to call it. And also, we take any new enactments from the state relative to the General Events Code or the Traffic Code, and we pull those revisions in also so that we have them in our code. If there's any specific questions, I can try to answer them.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-98 has been approved. Ordinance number 17-0-99. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Classic Ford of Mentor for the purchase of five 2018 Ford utility police interceptor vehicles and declaring an emergency. Mr. Filipek.
Thank you, Madam President. Chief Knight, please.
Thank you, sir. Madam President, members of council, in the 2017 budget, money was set aside to replace five Mark Police vehicles and one administrative vehicle. The administrative vehicle was purchased earlier this year. The budget also includes not only the purchase price of the vehicle, but enough funds to outfit all of the vehicles. We'll be replacing five 2014 Ford interceptor, police interceptor utility vehicles that range in from 120,000 to almost 150,000 miles. These vehicles have been very dependable and have served us very well, and we're going to continue to get the same type of vehicle. The state bid for this year for these cars was $31,686 per car. Classic Ford gave us a bid of $31,028 a car. Like to note, the Classic Ford of Mentor normally beats the bid by a small amount, but this year, they beat it by over $650 per car, so it's saving us almost $3,300 on a vehicle purchase. It's my recommendation that we purchase five Ford interceptor police utility vehicles from Classic Ford of Mentor for a total of $155,140, and these are all 2018 models that we'll be getting.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-99 has been approved. Ordinance number 17-0-100. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Dell Inc. for a three-year Microsoft Enterprise Volume Licensing Agreement under the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency. Mr. Filipek.
Thank you, Madam President. I've asked our Chief Information Officer, Ali San, to be here this evening to offer us some insight on to this three-year contract.
Thank you, Mr. Filipek, and the members of council. This orders primarily to renew our contract with Dell for another three-year term for Microsoft Enterprise Licensing Agreement. Microsoft basically created Office 365 government community cloud, they also refer as a GCC, to cater exclusively for federal, state, and local governments, and specific needs. Therefore, our data is safe, secure, and also separate. Office 365 also has integration with our phone system. I was going to show you some images, but I think I learned that not many people like to see it, but White House already using our system, proud to say that, and we have the same phone system that they have. I think we're doing okay in that case. With the, basically, renewal of this subscription, we believe cost-saving will continue, and I do recommend. Thank you.
Madam President, just had one comment to that. I think it's important to emphasize, we went away from, this is, again, one of these subscription services, as opposed to purchasing licensing, software licensing for each individual PC in our organization, and it's saved us money, but I think more importantly, to Mr. San's point is that the security upgrades that we have experienced with this are a dramatic upgrade. Every time Microsoft has a software update, it's automatically incorporated into the protection of our system. So, it's been good for us, and it's saved us money, so good on a lot of accounts.
Thank you. Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-0-100 has been approved. Resolution number 17-R-123. A resolution naming the property located at 6842 Heasley Road as Springbrook Gardens Park. Mr. Filipek.
Administration likes the name.[1184.65][1184.65](laughter).
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Resolution number 17-R-123 has been adopted. Second readings, we have none. Third readings, we have none. The manager's report.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Effective October 23rd and running through the second full week of December, the number of yard waste units a resident may set out increases from the current 12 up to a maximum of 25. And as a reminder, a unit is defined as a paper yard waste bag, a rigid container, or a bundle of brush. See, we'd like to thank the approximately 150 volunteers who removed over 1,600 pounds of garbage and debris from the Lake Erie shoreline at the Mentor Lagoons over a four-day period last month as part of the Adopt a Beach International Cleanup Effort. The third graders from the Mentor Public Schools will begin their safety visits to Mentor Safety Village on Monday, October 9th, running through the 20th of the month. This is a cooperative safety program with the Mentor Police, Fire, Public Works, and Recreation Departments, as well as the Mentor Firefighters Historical Association and the Mentor Public School System. Safety Village program teaches kids that age about home safety, litter prevention, and recycling, and a number of other topics. On Wednesday, October 4th, members of the Police and Fire Department will be participating in the Safe Walk to School event with Sterling Morton, Orchard Hollow, Fairfax, and Hopkins Elementary Schools. The Mentor Avenue Widening Contractor has restriped the lanes on Mentor Avenue to four narrower 10-and-a-half-foot lanes, I'm sure some have noticed, to permit construction on the north side of Mentor Avenue. The contractor will be on-site tomorrow to begin work on the north side of Mentor Avenue, but two-way traffic will be maintained during the entirety of this construction. A&amp;J Cement Contractors has resumed sidewalk replacement repairs on Midland Road today. Work is expected to be complete by the end of the week, and this is sidewalk work, and that will complete the sidewalk repairs in Zone 2C, which is last year's program. Wheeler's Cove Traffic Signals Poles were delivered this past Monday. The Public Works Department is scheduling their installation and all remaining work to complete that signal project. Once the poles are installed, it will take about three weeks to complete the work, and the signals will then be placed in flash mode for about 10 days prior to activation to try to give people a chance to acclimate to the changes there. We are also currently advertising for bids for the Two-Town Ditch Restoration and the Springbrook Gardens Park Combined Project. We decided it was probably an opportunity to save some money to bid those projects together since they're very similar type of construction activities. Bids will be opened on October 17th. We expect to have a contractor selected and a recommendation for City Council ready for the first meeting in November. The Army Corps Permit for the Two-Town Project is expected to be issued this week. If it isn't, I'll be telling you about that two weeks from now. The completion date for the combined project is scheduled for September 29th, 2018, but of course, the Two-Town work is expected to begin this fall and will be completed much earlier. On Monday through Wednesday of this week, the staff at Blackbrook has been aerating our greens and tees, and the helium to greens takes approximately a week or so. Also, we'll be reseating the amphitheater grounds later this week as well. The Ignite the Ice Back to School Bash is this Friday, October 6th, from 8:30 to 10:30 p.m. Come celebrate the start of the new school year with music, prizes, and skating. Movie Night at the Amphitheater on Saturday, October 7th will feature Lady and the Tramp starting at 6:30 p.m. We remind people to bring their own blankets, lawn chairs, and refreshments, and then we'll have two more Saturdays after that. Again, these are all family movies. We'll finish on October 21st, Mr. Kaminsky?
28.
So, Wes?
28.
Okay, 28th? 21st, I think.
21st.
Yeah, 21st, which will be The Nightmare Before Christmas, which is actually a Halloween movie. We're planning on partnering up with the library system to do, I think, Donuts and Cider and some other fun stuff for kids out there as a nod to Halloween, which is a good lead into my next comment here. Trick or Treat in the City of Mentor will take place on Halloween night, Tuesday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., as we have done in the past. And then finally, we have one relocation of a business in town that I wanted to bring to your attention. Nusa Bistro has moved now to 9,500 Diamond Center Drive, and they are open now, right, Mr. Trump? Excited about that. And we have two new businesses to announce, All City Candy at 7,441 Mentor Avenue and Vipasana at 8,500 Station Street. So, we appreciate their investment in our community and wish them great success. That's all.
Thank you. Before we proceed, I'd like to take a moment to recognize a guest with us this evening. We have a scout. Would you like to share your name, and are you working on a specific project?
Yeah, I'm Grayden Snyder from Boy Scout troop 75 out of St. Eric's, and I'm working on my citizenship with the community repair patch.
Great, well, thank you. Welcome to council.
Good luck.
Clerk's correspondence.
Council is in receipt of a new liquor permit request for Center Mentor LLC DBA Kepphart Fisher at 8807 Mentor Avenue. Council also is in receipt of Mentor Municipal Court Month End Report for August 2017.
Commission Committee reports. Council's in receipt of the Community Arts Commission, August 3rd, 2017, and Municipal Planning Commission, September 7th, 2017. Old business.
Madam President?
Mr. Donovan?
I guess I'll ask Mr. Swager. Phase two of Midland Storm Sewer, do you have a date on that?
As of now, the storm sewer is complete. The resurfacing is also complete. We've got lawn restoration that needs to take place, and that's, it'll probably be two to three weeks to complete.
To go out onto Route 20, you mean, and start that, the second phase of that connection? That's what I meant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Phase two would be a part of the budget, the budgeting process this year as far as scheduling. I think we originally had it scheduled for 2018.
Okay, thank you. And just one more thing, the lights at Garfield, are they, have they been working on those a long time? Are those getting close to being connected? I think they were boring today. I saw them boring under the road, I think.
Correct. They're scheduled to be energized tomorrow, the new source.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you.
Any other old business? New business?
Oh, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Marn?
I'd like to say happy birthday to our fire chief.
Oh, happy birthday.
39 years old. 39. 49. 39.
39, thank you.
39 and holding.
And secondly, and I just saw this now, email sent for the Tribe series, when we'll find out tonight who the Tribe plays, but game one that takes place on Thursday at 7:30, the national anthem will be sung by Scott Posey from Lake Catholic High School. He's a music teacher at Lake Catholics, so congratulations to him.
Thank you. Any other new business?
No.
Okay, persons before council. We have one person this evening. Please come to the microphone and identify yourself and your name and address, please.
Good evening.
Month End Report for August 2017. Commission Committee reports, council's in receipt of the Community Arts Commission, August 3, 2017, and Municipal Planning Commission, September 7, 2017. Old business.
Madam President.
Mr. Donovan?
I guess I'll ask Mr. Swiger. Phase two of Midland Storm Sewer, do you have a date on that?
As of now, the storm sewer is complete. The resurfacing is also complete. We've got lawn restoration that needs to take place, and that's, it'll probably be two to three weeks to complete.
To go out onto Route 20, you mean, and start that, the second phase of that connection? That's what I meant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Phase two would be a part of the budget, the budgeting process this year as far as schedule. I think we originally had it scheduled for 2018.
Okay, thank you. And just one more thing. The lights at Garfield, are they, have they been working on those a long time? Are those getting close to being connected? I think they were boring today. I saw them boring under the road, I think.
Correct. They're scheduled to be energized tomorrow, the new source.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you.
Any other old business? New business?
Oh, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mern?
I'd like to say happy birthday to our fire chief.
Oh, happy birthday.
39 years old. 39.
49.
39.
39. Thank you.
39 and holding.
And secondly, and I just saw this now, email sent for the Tribe series, when we'll find out tonight who the Tribe plays, but game one that takes place on Thursday at 7:30, the national anthem will be sung by Scott Posey from Lake Catholic High School. He's a music teacher at Lake Catholic, so congratulations to him.
Thank you. Any other new business?
Nope.
Okay, persons before council, we have one person this evening. Please come to the microphone and identify yourself and your name and address, please.
Good evening. Deborah McCauley. My address is 6730 Farmingdale Lane in Mentor. I'm here this evening for a couple of different reasons. First of all, I want to clear up any misconceptions. I do not work on Osborne Farm. I was a previous employee, and I chose to stand for what I believe in, and I no longer work there. I choose to stand still. I'm standing for what is right and for what I believe in, and I'm standing for those that cannot stand for themselves. The horses, the eagles, multiple other creatures on the farm, fox, deer, squirrels. I stand for trees, the pond, the rich acreage. I also stand for some inanimate objects, such as the historic buildings rich with the past, present, and future, or the unique well pump buried far back on the property, and by the way, is the only source of water on the entire 90-acre farm. I want to talk tonight specifically about issue number five, which will be worded somewhat similarly to this. Shall 4.25 acres at the southeast corner of State Route 615 and Interstate 90 be rezoned from C1 conservation to B3 interchange? My answer is no, and this is why. This is the Osborne Farms. This is a beautiful, well-kept, historic farm that you pass when you're entering 90 East off of Route 615. It's a 90-acre farm, and it was zoned conservation for a good reason. By method of what seems to me as political trickery, after nearly a year's silence, Rick Osborne suddenly proposed, nearly 45 days prior to the election, the Equestrian Dream. The last we heard was that no matter what happened to the rezoning of the hotel, the Osbournes were getting out of the horse business. It's a flyer program from the Lake County Fair. The Osborne family sponsored the harness racing, and they sponsored this race, $11,500 purse for one race. I bring this up because I don't really believe that they were ever planning on getting out of the horse business, and that was only said conveniently. My stronger point is that conveniently, they're talking about the Equestrian Dream just in time to encourage Mentor voters to repass, to pass the zoning and push through the erecting of a hotel. And I'm going to say this with extreme sarcasm. This is just what we need in Mentor. More hotels, more people, more traffic. The Equestrian Dream is nothing other than smoke and mirrors to make a bad decision seem like a good one. It is trickery, and just as last year, we were told the horse business was going to cease, this year, we're being told something else, and next year, we'll be told something else again. This idea, if it were ever to come to fruition, it'll be far from a dream. It'll be a nightmare. I've been actively pursuing a permit to ride in a peaceful protest with horses on horseback. After looking at the area, going, speaking to various people, I've decided that this is absolutely dangerous. There is nowhere to stand on horseback that I would not be putting my fellow riders and horses in a dangerous situation. So I've let that go. I'm done. I'm not, I'm not pursuing the permit any longer because it's too dangerous. If I feel this way now about a few horses and a few people prior to any construction, God forbid that any of the 12 5-acre properties that are proposed to cater to horse owners, God forbid they should ever have children, and we have a busing situation on State Route 615. Any horse owner is going to tell you that a 12 5-acre farms, one after another, after another, that's not a dream, particularly about a half a mile from the back of a hotel in Interstate 90. Horse people don't want that. We want trails. We want land. So in conclusion, well, I will say this. There's already been two failed horse lover communities. One was in Kirtland. It's called Bridlehurst, never came to fruition. And one, Red Raider, in Novelty, Ohio, failed miserably. In conclusion, the Osborne Farm will stand, just as I am, for many, many years to come if it's remained zoned in the conservation district. It will remain the beautiful, well-kept, historic farm that you see when you're entering Route 90 East from 615. Divided, the Osborne Farms will fall. So you decide, voters. Should Osborne Farm stand or fall? If you want to save Osborne Farms, vote no to rezoning 4.25 acres, and it's actually 4.235 acres, to be exact. There is a political action committee. It's entitled Mentor Citizens for Responsible Zoning. I am not speaking on behalf of them this evening, but there is a committee out there if anyone is interested. That's all I have to say. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gentlemen? Mr. Henick?
Could I offer a little insight into referendum zoning, though, just so that, you know, people understand? And I know that this has got to be a bit confusing. You know, you would think that if the voters say no to rezoning, that that's the end of the story. It's not. I think you can bet that if the voters turn it down, that particular issue will probably get sued. It's really no different than council, if it had turned it down, versus the voters. And it's just what we, you know, learned early on, we have a representative government. So if council said no, that was because council acted on behalf of the voters. If the voters say no, it's really no different than council saying no. And what happens then, under our form of government, you know, we have three branches, and we have the judicial branch. And the judicial branch can say whether or not the voters or council were right in turning down a rezoning. So it's, it's not as cut and dry as, as you might think, and there is an expense that comes with a lawsuit of that type. And, you know, so it, just saying no doesn't, doesn't make the, the issue go away. It, it just kicks it to a different day and probably puts it into court, where there'll be a lot of money spent. And a judge could say that we were wrong, that the voters were wrong. It, it's not unusual. And I can tell you that, you know, if I were representing the property owner, I would say this to the judge. Judge, the city put in a brand-new interchange, and it goes right next to my property. As a matter of fact, the ramp to the interchange abuts my property. The city has interchange zoning. You know, so they could have asked for interchange zoning. They could have asked for B2. But the fact is, the, the use directly adjacent to this property changed after a 30-some-year effort of the city to get the money to put in a new interchange. So it, when you look at the issue and referendum zoning, it's not as simple as, oh, the voters said no. There's always another step. And I just wanted to point that out. I'm sorry if I rattled on too long, but it's, it's not a done deal if the voters say no. It's really no different than Newell Creek. The voters said no to that, too, and we ended up in court. And, you know, you, the council tries to do the best it can to have growth, but also manage it. But sometimes, people don't agree with what council wants or what the voters want. But ultimately, it's the courts that get the last say. Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
So moved.